I'd like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones if they have them. I'll be sitting in this evening as deputy mayor. Mayor Arasinko had to be out of town. We also have some personal issues with some council people. So, Mrs. Gatos, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Caleri are here in attendance along with myself. The 2018 budget was presented by Mr. Little and his -- put together by his staff, presented last month at our council meeting. It has all of our expenditures and all of our revenues for the municipality. This document is available online at the municipal website. There's also a copy at the Monroeville Public Library, and I believe there's also a copy at the municipal building if anyone needs to review it, but it is all online. It goes through everything, all of our expenditures and all of our revenues. When we talk about revenues, you know, the one that gets the most press is the real estate tax. And our millage, our real estate tax is four mils. That's $4 per 1,000. The budget, the 2018 budget presented by Mr. Little, does not call for a tax increase. The tax, if we pass the budget as is, there is no tax increase for 2018. We will be having two budget hearings, this one, and then we have another one scheduled later in the month, and council could decide to have more hearings if necessary. So getting back to our, the millage tax or the millage rate, your property taxes, your real estate taxes are for, what you pay on are three things: your county tax, your school district tax, Gateway School District, and Monroeville tax. Your school district tax being 19.34 mils, your county tax being 4.73, Monroeville being four mils. So in the example of a $100,000 home, your taxes, your property taxes would be as follows: they'd be $1,934 for the school district, $473 for the county, and $400 for Monroeville. So, just to be clear, what we're talking about this evening and what municipality covers is those four mils, the last one. The $400 on the $100,000 home is what a taxpayer would pay for the items we're going to be discussing over our next hearings. But just to clarify, this budget does not call for a tax increase, but we will be going through all the line items of the expenditures and the revenues over the next couple of budget hearings. And that's all the comment I wanted to make, just to get things started here. We are going to have a, open up for public comment. We will only be having a public comment at the beginning of the meeting here, so it'll be your time to speak about budget items only. And I will open up the floor for anyone who has signed in or anyone who would like to sign in before we get the meeting started. In an effort to run a efficient meeting in here and get moving through things, because these meetings can last long, because we are going to go through a lot of departments, we're going to ask any public comment to be five minutes or less. And the floor is open for public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Griesok. Chad Steubenbort, resident of Monroeville. All right. So just to be clear, after the reassessment, the millage rate was 1.8, correct?
Are we talking about the 2018 budget?
Whoever would like to answer.
Is it 2018 budget discussion?
Yes, yes, I will be.
That's what the public comment's for.
Correct. So, all right, well, after the reassessment, it was 1.8 mil. So you were talking about four mil equalling $400, so the taxes would have gone from $180 on a $100,000 house up to $400. And although the budget itself doesn't call for a one mil increase, in the manager's address, which is included within the budget, it does request another one mil increase for capital improvement projects, correct?
That's correct.
So with that being said, I was just curious as to where council sat on that. If you guys are in support of that or if you guys are opposed to that?
The budget does not call for a tax increase. It's in the message, but the budget, which we vote on, that we vote on it as is, does not increase the millage rate.
Chad, I can recommend, okay?
Absolutely, and as a constituent, I can ask of my council people.
Council carries policy, they carry tax increases.
Absolutely.
And that is up to them.
Which is why I'm here to ask.
Apparently, it doesn't matter what we tell you, because you make stuff up anyway. So we raised taxes once. It was agreed upon when we came in here, and you said we raised them three times. What were the other two?
So, that's not really about this, but I would love to address it. So it started off at 1.8.
It says in the paper.
Correct. So it started off at 1.8 after the reassessment, correct?
That's correct.
In a reassessment year, you can only raise up to 5%, correct? So you raised the 5%. You then went to court.
We didn't raise it.
Who's "we"? Because I wasn't here when that happened.
You were not. Councilman Griesok and others were.
Cool.
Okay, so it was raised from 1.8.
Raised, that's a better phrase.
It was raised 5%. You then had to go to court to raise it to 2.2 mils, correct?
But the council did not raise the first time, correct? The assessment did that.
No. The assessment took it to 1.8, from 2 mil down to 1.8.
Okay, so we did not raise.
Correct.
If everyone, for one second, if we could all just pull this in for a second, we're going to be, let's talk about the 2018 budget.
Absolutely.
For everyone here.
But for everyone's sake, I mean, I was just called a liar here. I'd like to simply point out.
Well, you are.
Went from 1.8.
And you'll continue to lie. And I'm about done hearing it. How's that? I could keep going and doing this all night, Chad. I'm done listening to you. I'm not running for council. You're trying to run for mayor, that's fine. I'm not. As a constituent, I like who's sitting here. I don't like you twisting people's words. I don't like you making up numbers. It's not good for this community. Continue. I just need people to know that you don't tell the truth.
Very good. So it was at 1.8 mil. It was raised 5%, correct, Manager Little? Then had to go to court to be taken up to 2.2 mils. So that was the second. There's two ordinance passed in 2013 for two tax increases. And then in the subsequent year, it was raised to four mil, right? Went from 2.2 to four. So yes, it went from 1.8, raised 5%.
Are you saying you wouldn't have listened to the court? You have to listen to the court.
The court lowered it from two mil and made it net neutral to 1.8 mil. The council raised it 5%. The maximum amount you can raise in a reassessment year.
Not this council.
There were members that were on the council then. I'm not saying anyone individually. I'm saying the council raised it 5% in 2013. Then went to the court to petition to get it up to 2.2 mil. 2.2 mil was then raised to four mil. Is that accurate, Mr. Little?
The two, we raised taxes in 2014, one point, about 1.6. It was 1.59 something. So it was, so between, there's a tax increase between 2.2 and 2.4. There was something, there's a missing link there. If I, I don't know if.
No, it went from 2.2 to 4.0, correct?
That's, that's what I don't know.
Okay. So there are three tax increases.
No, I don't think it was 2.2, Chad. I think it was something like 2.1.
Well, I can even look all copies. In 2013, there were two ordinances passed with two tax increases. And then there was this substantial increase that took it up to four mil.
Can I ask you what that has to do with us?
I don't know. You'll have to ask Mr. Caleri why he inquired.
No, you put it in the paper.
No, you put it in the paper.
Correct.
What's that to do with us?
I'm not running against you, Mr. Harvey. I'm not trying to make this into anything other than asking.
You make everything into everything, Chad. It's what you do.
So in the 2018 budget.
Mr. Steubenbort, could you, 2018 budget, please.
Okay.
Give the floor.
Absolutely. The 2018 budget, I'm just simply inquiring. Manager Little is requesting a one mil increase for capital improvement projects only. I understand that. I'm just simply asking where council stands on that. I believe that everyone has the right to know where people stand on that. Does anyone want to answer? If not, that's fine.
Until we get through these budget hearings, I have nothing.
And once again, to clarify, there is a, in the budget message that Mr. Little presented, the message, he recommended a one mil increase for capital improvements, which is roads, storm drains. However, that is not in the budget. The budget that we are voting on, if we pass the budget as is, there is no tax increase. Just to be clear. Any other public comments on 2018 budget?
You can sit there and smile at me all day, Chad. It just doesn't bother me.
Do I sign in? I've not done this before.
You can sign in. That'd be great.
Sign your name in, and then you can just say your name and that you are from Monroeville. You don't need to give your street address.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm Brenda Walsh.
You're going to have to speak.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you. I'm Brenda Walsh. I live here in Monroeville. And my question on the budget, from what I read, was that there was an item, sorry, I'm nervous.
Hey, just fine.
All right, just relax.
There was an item to recommend a full-time position for someone to solely be responsible for handling right-to-know requests at an annual rate of 15K. Did I not read that correctly?
It was for a part-time.
Oh, 15K. Guess that would have to be part-time, wouldn't it? Sorry. Okay. Thank you for the correction. But for the sole purpose of handling right-to-know requests, correct?
Correct.
Okay. My question is, is that legal? Because it seems like it's solely for retribution and retaliation for those, and I've not lived here long, but, you know, trying to catch up and reading and politics and everything, it just seems like it's retribution for a few people who have requested them over and over again. That it is, I can understand where it would be a burden, but having someone solely to do that seems like a direct retribution for those that have done it, when if you were transparent on the information and it was posted, no one would have to ask for the information. So that's my question, is, can I say it as a question? Is it legal? Could I just ask that?
Let me answer that.
You know what, most, I think what, I don't know if it's legal or not, I think most of the, one thing that you said, transparency, I think most everything that we do is transparent. We just happen to have a few residents that make it their business to do nothing but continuously over and over and over and over again, extraordinarily number of right-to-knows, for nothing to do except cause one of our employees, the poor guy can't get his job done because he's spending all his time trying to take care of these right-to-knows. That's where that comes in.
And I can, I can appreciate that, but again, I'm going to go back to the legality of it. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just, it just seems like it is, if I was in the workplace, that seems like retaliation for something that I would do as an employee. So I just, my concern is, I can understand where you would do it as overhead, that wow, this is a burden, you know, if it was non-political, it would be, wow, this is really a burden. We're having a lot of these requests. So we really need, the overhead is huge. We need to add another person to handle multiple things, and this is included. When you single it out, it just seems really, really illegal to me.
The right-to-know law requires specific answers within specific times. Some of these requests, these right-to-knows that are filed, require a lot of research. And if you don't reply to the Office of Open Records properly, with the proper documents, then what they end up doing is taking you to court, because they don't think you're responding properly. When the gentleman up there doesn't have the time and doesn't get that notarized document in on the exact day that he's supposed to, our solicitor ends up downtown explaining to the judge why that occurred.
And that costs us even more money.
And so what happens is, if somebody files a right-to-know and says, how many brick are in the municipal building? Well, he files a response that says, we don't know. The person that files the right-to-know files an appeal. It goes out to Harrisburg. Harrisburg sends a document back, why don't you know? You see where I'm going?
I do. I fully appreciate that side of it, I do. But what then happens when you hire this person part-time to pay 15K, but your line item is so specific, and suddenly there's no more right-to-knows? A person moves out of, whoever you're complaining about has moved, there are no more right-to-knows. What do you do with this person then?
Then you wouldn't need them anymore.
That's why they're part-time.
I'm sorry, what is your name? I didn't hear.
Brenda Walsh.
Brenda. I'm not totally understanding what you're talking about on two levels. One, on the retribution level, and we'll hold that right there for a second. And you're saying that, that this is going to make it less transparent? What we're trying to do is, we're trying to be more transparent than what we are. And I think we're as transparent as we possibly can be within how Mr. Harvey described it with respect to the time elements involved. This is a problem all across the country. And because the right-to-know law, which was passed in 2009, and was in line with certain other right-to-know laws in Illinois, California, it has just proliferated, the RTKs across the Commonwealth. It has just ballooned. And there's nothing wrong with that, because we want to be transparent. But this part-time position will make it more transparent, and the gentleman, Joe Sedlak, who is our HR director and also our right-to-know officer, will give him more time to do HR duties in a municipality this size with 141 full-time employees and over 100 seasonal and part-time employees. So to have, an HR department in a community this size should have three people in it. We have one, who's also, his time is taken up doing RTKs. This in no way is talking about making things less transparent. In getting back to the retribution, that, you're going to have to explain that to me, and I don't understand that.
I didn't say this was make it less transparent. To me, if everything was transparent, there would be less reason to have to submit right-to-knows. My impression, it's just my impression, that the reason there would be so many is because people feel like they're not getting the information that should be. And I might be totally off base.
I think I can, like, a lot of our right-to-knows, I think I can say this, are, I want a copy of the last council meeting, or you can get one for free from the library. Or I want to know a copy of the brochure the library handed out, whatever. It's things like that. It really are things that are public.
As an example, there was a right-to-know filed on how much fuel two of the ambulances in Monroeville used in a three-month period. Well, it's not published anywhere. It's not, they would have to go into the computer that tracks the fuel pumps over there and print it out. But, so it's stuff like that that we don't know.
And it is fair enough that, you know, like you said, the law was passed in 2009, so there have been, you know, it does burden the personnel. And I can see having to add personnel. I guess my real problem is that it singled out that this person is a full-time person, and that's their only duty. That is their duty. Instead of general HR that, hey, if you're not busy, you know, you add a person to the whole department, so when you're not busy, you do that because we have this. You've singled it out to be strictly for right-to-know, so that to me seems to be retribution directly, a thumb in somebody's eye, because you've asked for these, we're going to add 15. And I'm just saying, when I'm looking at line items, 15K is 15K of our budget, and I just wondered if, the way it was worded, it just seems like retribution.
That makes a little bit of sense, how you're saying it. So all we would have to do is, if we're going to hire a part-time person, is put him in with our department and let him work accordingly.
Yes. And not be specifically to one duty only. Or you can't do anything else, because you were targeted just for right-to-know. The way it's worded seems very much detrimental to the community. Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you.
The floor is open for public comment on the 2018 budget.
My name is Alyssa Beck. I live in Monroeville, Pennsylvania. I guess I could piggyback on that last statement. It's an interesting statement to me, because I've heard a lot about transparency, and I'm glad to hear, Tim, that you're mentioning things, you want things to be more transparent. I think a lot of the issues that we've been working with recently in council may have to do with lack of transparency, such as, for example, I don't know how many people in Monroeville right now know that Monroeville is being sued by GeoKinetics. I think that's an issue that ought to be, for example, up on the website, so that people can get activated to work with it. So there's a lot of.
It is on our website.
It is on our website.
That there's a lawsuit?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Been up there for a lot of week, Alyssa.
For a week? Okay. Well, when it first happened on October 11th, I, for example, didn't know about it. So I would think that things would be put up as.
All the court documents are up there.
As they're.
We got them as soon as they came up.
Okay.
Or we put them up as soon as they came in.
As soon as you have them?
Well, no, you can't rush into it. You've got to find out what the solicitor says. Maybe he says, don't post that yet.
But it's on there.
I mean, I personally would love to see, and on the budget issue, I would love to see a sustainability coordinator put into place in Monroeville. I'm, I don't really know much about budget in Monroeville. I've never been to a budget hearing before. I assumed when I walked in the door, there would be a paper copy of it. I know that you read it last time, and I was here for that.
But it is online.
Yeah. And so when we, and I maybe, so the cap, are you saying the capital improvements one mil increase would be on the 2019 budget?
18.
But we're talking about the 2018 budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So if there's a one mil increase for roads and storm drains, for example, I think it would be incumbent upon the municipality of Monroeville to work within the context of sustainability. So if Monroeville is going to spend the money with our one mil increase of tax dollars to do the same old, same old that Monroeville has been doing, then we're going to be putting more money into it than we need to.
There's no tax increase here.
There's no taxing. We're not talking about taxing.
Okay. Well, so, I don't understand then, but, but, but are you saying that there, is there money in the 2018 budget for roads and storm drains?
Yes.
They're here, okay. We started a concept of pay-as-you-go with respect to capital in Monroeville. Monroeville is approximately $26 million in bond issues that are outstanding. We pay $3.2 million a year on debt service. It's just like paying your mortgage, your credit card. And that won't reduce until the year 2024. Our debt service is about 10% approximately of our general fund. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends 10% should be the max of your, of your general fund. We approached that, we were over that, we were 11% over that, but because our debt service has come down a little bit, and we've been on a pay-as-you-go, we're reducing. It's just like reducing your mortgage-making, well, not making an extra pay. We're trying to get out of the debt we're in. That's, that was my recommendation to council in 2014, and it is still my recommendation. Don't float any bonds.
Which we have not. Make sure.
Which we have not. We haven't floated a bond. We've refunded, but, let me, can I finish? Because there seems to be confusion, and I want to try and clear that up. Now, what we have done is we have transferred a million dollars, which was from the last tax increase in 2014. Okay? That was part of, we brought, we get about $2.3 million on a mil. We raised mil approximately 1.59, somewhere around there. And that brought in maybe about $3 million. One million of that goes into the capital improvement fund. In government accounting, you have separate funds. Now, in the meantime, when you go, when you pay-as-you-go, we would usually spend, we used to spend just $1 million on roads alone in Monroeville. We only spent $250,000 in '14, and I think in '15, we did the same thing. We upped it to $500,000. And this year, I've recommended putting another $300,000 in to spend $800,000 on roads, because out of that million dollars comes $500,000 comes out for roads. All right? So as you don't fix things as much as you did before, as I said in my budget message, they begin to deteriorate. I have had this in my budget message the last two years, and I may have had it in the last three years. I don't know if it goes back to '15. It may be in there. But everything deteriorates. My responsibility of the manager of this municipality is to inform this council and the residents what's coming down the road here in the future. And when I say the future, I mean two, three, five, 10 years. And our infrastructure is deteriorating, and we've had more people, since I've been working here, complaining about the roads. Now, the sewer lines, we don't have to worry about in the water, that's the authority's responsibility. But it's other things like vehicles, police vehicles, public works vehicles. I told, I told the department heads, and I said this publicly, don't put in for any vehicles next year. All right? Because the million dollars we're transferring, a million dollars in a community this size just doesn't go too far. We would spend over $2 million every year, computers, vehicles, roads, maintaining buildings from a capital perspective, maybe putting a roof on a building, taking care of the parks. All that stuff has to come out of capital. All right? And my recommendation for the last two, three years, yes, and I'll stand by it, is somewhere down the line, you're going to have to increase, or you're going to have to float a bond. You float a bond, it's just like taking out a credit card. In the long run, you pay more money on the interest. So that's what this community is up against right now. Now, as Mr. Griesok is saying, there is not a one mil increase in the budget. It's not budgeted in capital. Let's just talk capital. It's not in there. But my recommendation is to put it in there. It's up to this council to do it or not.
May I add one other thing? So many people, including myself, prior to getting on here and getting a little more educated on it, the minute they heard the word capital, they thought the word borrow. And I think that's where the confusion lies. Mr. Little's talking about a capital budget that's cash, not borrowing.
Okay. So I think, Mr. Little, thank you, thank you, Mr. Harvey. A lot of what you said just now, I heard you say at the last meeting, and so I'm going to try to say what I'm saying in a different, in a different way. As we put, if we were to decide to put money towards green infrastructure rather than what we have been doing, I'm suggesting that there will be less capital dollars needed to do this work. What I'm, I am not hearing yet from this part of the room is that we are moving towards working green infrastructure into our budget. And so what I'm suggesting is that as that happens, it becomes an economic cash flow in a direction that hasn't been seen by our municipality before. Like I mentioned at the last meeting where I spoke, Millvale has this pivot 2.0 process going. They have a sustainability coordinator. They're working with community very closely to bring money in that, so that we don't, I don't, I mean, I'm blessed. I don't, I don't have a mortgage. I don't have credit card debt. I want to see Monroeville that happen, and I'm suggesting it could happen before 2024, if we're a little bit more open about how we go about doing this. And so I am suggesting, I don't, you know, I haven't looked at the budget in detail, but I'm suggesting that a sustainability coordinator be put in place, so that you have somebody on your staff to advise you about, for example, how permeable pavement will not only be potentially less expensive to put down on the road, but it will capture water so that we're not overflowing into Pitt Karen and into our sewage overflows in the city of Pittsburgh. That's, that's what I'm here to say. And I'm, I know that maybe I start to sound redundant, and maybe I haven't figured out yet how to say things in a way that's most appropriate, but I'm just here to say that I think that there's other ways that we can all go about things where we don't have to, you know, have floating bonds and, you know, we can rather have floating clean rivers, you know?
Your point, your point is taken.
Okay.
I think it is some, it's a discussion actually with our engineering department, which there are no representatives from that, from that department.
And does that happen before the ninth? Between now and the ninth? So that there could be a line item put in for the ninth that would include that?
Well, we wouldn't be.
Because.
I guess the earliest, we could, we wouldn't be enacting a budget on November 9th. We'll have our next budget hearing then, but we would not be voting on it until the December, the December meeting, the December regular council meeting. But that, what you're talking about is not in this current budget. It would, it would be, it would take some work to get that in there for, probably even for our engineering department to even figure out exactly the rule that you're discussing for our engineering department even, figure out exactly the rule that you're discussing and talking about, to figure out how to even work that into the municipality.
I don't think it's.
It may be more of a long-term thing to talk about. It may be something that our staff can look at what other communities are doing, maybe like Millvale, and maybe they can kind of see what some of these, other communities are doing along these lines. But for us as a council to just throw that in there now, I don't know how effective that would be.
I don't, I don't think, to me, if you do it right, it's a project for the 2019 budget.
Work on it through all of '18.
I mean, that's the way I see it. Because otherwise, trying to get it in here, I think it would be half-page'd and probably wouldn't turn out to be what you're thinking, where if you planned for the 2019 budget, you can sit down and outline it, outmold it, and come up with costs, and, you know, you know exactly where you want to be with, with the cost of a department like that and
what they would do.
What they would do.
And how does a citizen get directly involved, or how does a group of citizens get directly involved with that kind of a thing?
Well, maybe the first step is to, I mean, if council is okay with it, to direct Mr. Little to maybe explore what other communities are doing, maybe some surrounding communities, maybe Millvale, and see.
Well, and the city of Pittsburgh is.
Yeah, and then he certainly could, he could certainly make his contacts that he has and see what's out there.
The other thing that could happen is that the deputy mayor could form a small committee to research this stuff and bring information to us.
Right. I mean, Alyssa, I hear you, okay? And I understand your point. I understand Amy Rockwell, she's the manager down in Millvale. And I understand what's going on in Millvale, and also, and Millvale's had a lot of problems with that, with respect to Gertie's run and the overflow and all of that. And they've been given a lot of attention through the decades because of that. And I, and I've talked briefly with Amy in the last two years about different things they are doing. And it is laudable, there's no question about it. And can Monroeville do things? And I think we talked about that, I think it was at a, at a public meeting, and I think maybe you and I talked about it on the phone with respect to a grant that's still hanging out there through the Allegheny Conservation District, which is through Westmoreland County and the School District, putting in bio swells and impermeable pavement at the library, and doing different things of that nature. So, I mean, I, I personally, I hear you. I hear what you're saying, and it does take time to do that kind of thing because, you